Good evening. We will call this meeting to order for the June 8th, 2023 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. As we get to your items on the agenda, we'd like to ask you to come up and to the podium and state your name for the record and speak to your item. Before we get started with the first item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its champions, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. The second item on our agenda is to approve our agenda, and Tom, I know we have a handful of changes and additions. Do you want to walk us through these?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Because we don't have a second City Council meeting in June, we had a number of items on the Planning Commission last night that were being advanced to the City Council tonight. And because of that, we do have more changes to the agenda than normal. I will walk you through those. First of all, on the consent agenda, item 4G, we would request that this item be pulled from tonight's agenda. We will come back to you with this item when it is ready. This relates to a competitive negotiated general bond sale. The second item is item 5D2 on your agenda. This one is related to the Apple Valley High School turf field accessory storage building. This item had some revisions made because it was heard at the Planning Commission last night. That's item 5D2. Next item is 5D3, Apple Valley High School turf field accessory storage unit. That is 5D3. Just making sure here. Yes, there were two items related to the Apple Valley item. 5E2 is Eastview High School turf field accessory storage building. We have a revised resolution on that item. On 5G, this is an item on the agenda related to short-term rentals, and you have received some additional public comment on that topic. So we wanted to make sure the council had that before you tonight. So you have that 5G item. And then 5H, which is the drive-through window in conjunction with a Class 3 restaurant. We had a revision to that item as well. So that's 5H. And then lastly, on item 7, that's your calendar of upcoming events. We have an updated version of that as well.
All right, so we have one change in the removal of 5G and then a 4G, excuse me, and then a number of revisions and updates this evening. So with that, I would ask if there are no other changes for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
A motion from Councilmember Bergman and a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item on our agenda, that passes, by the way. The next item on our agenda is the audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. We have a total of 10 minutes for this item. I don't see anyone signed up for the audience participation portion. Would anyone like to speak in the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close this portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. And council members, are there any items you'd like to pull from consent? Seeing none, citizens, any items to pull from consent? All right, seeing none there, we would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Melander and a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, consent agenda is approved. Move on to our regular agenda. We will start with, they're with me here, item 5A, which is to adopt a resolution accepting a grant from Great River Energy. Matt, all you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think I'll invite up Kyle Chester with DEA and Jamie Stallman with Great River Energy. So to help me. This is kind of a fun item, something we don't do every week. In an effort to continue our ongoing sustainability and green infrastructure work here at the city, the city's being bestowed with a $10,000 grant toward the purchase of an electric vehicle that we've actually has arrived finally. There was a delay due to some supply chain issues, but we do have it here. And these gentlemen are here to provide us with this grant. So it's a $10,000 grant from GRE going through or in partnership with DEA. So.
Thank you.
Anything you jump, you want to say?
Good evening, Kyle Chester with Dakota Electric. Yeah, Dakota Electric is very thrilled to be here presenting this grant award. It was a very competitive process and working with the city staff, we were able to get this award. So we're just really thrilled to be here.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Maybe we'll take a picture quick here.
Yeah, happy to, happy to. Should we, why don't you guys just get up here and we can just, maybe we can all just stand up and get one here if that works. Matt, not in the picture is going to pay for that though.
I hope there's fingers on the thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is 5B, which is to adopt a resolution. You would like me to probably accept that donation, wouldn't you Pam? Thank you. We got the picture out of the way. We forgot the important part. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the grant from Great River Energy?
So moved. Second.
A motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, thank you. That item is approved and thank you Pam. 5B is to adopt a resolution proclaiming June 28th through July 5th, 2023, the 57th Annual Apple Valley Freedom Days Celebration Community Festival and authorize temporary placement of signage on public property. And we have Eric, Pat, oh, there we go. Come on up, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Pat Ganswell. It's almost upon us. We're, the gears are grinding now for Freedom Days. So I'd like to first thank the City of Apple Valley for their support. Apple Valley, American Legion. This year, we have basically one item that's new. Okay. I think we'll just go right down the line. We got the Casting with the Cops will be Wednesday, June 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30, Cobblestone Lake Fishing Pier. The carnival, we are waiting to hear exactly what their pricing is going to be and so forth. So, but that's going to be Friday, June 30th through the 4th. Dancing and Cruising Car Show, that's on June 30th, 4 to 9, at the Apple Valley American Legion. Music in the Park, June 30th, 6:30 to 8:30 at Kelly Park. Thanks for the Arts Foundation for that. The Apple Valley Senior Center is doing a root beer float. That's new this year. They're going to be doing that on Saturday, July 1st, 12:30 to 2:00 at the Apple Valley Senior Center. Cup Foods Night, Family Fun Night is Monday, the 3rd at Johnny Cake Ridge Park, and that's from 5 to 9. July 4th, the Fun Run, and that's going to be 8:00 AM at Hayes Park. Parade is July 4th, obviously. Starting time, 1 o'clock. We need help at 7:00 AM when I get there too, to start setting up. So, if we know anybody. We have the pre-fireworks party at Johnny Cake. This year, they're going, we have Rockin' Woody will be the entertainment. So, and then fireworks, 10 o'clock. So, like I said, the wheels have been turning since July 5th last year on this. So we're pretty much got it nailed down. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to the committee. This is not a solo effort. I know, right? You have lots of help, but.
My co-chair was going to be here, and she hasn't gotten here yet. So.
Great. Thank you. We look forward to the events. Again, thanks to the Arts Foundation for jumping in and being part of this, as well as all the others listed on there. And I can't not mention the extra work and effort that both Parks and Staff and Police Department will put in to make this a good event for everybody as well. So, also a good one.
Matt, I can't believe you didn't wear your great cruising tee shirt.
Well, I heard you were wearing a tie, so I had to up it a little bit. So.
Those are the greatest tee shirts. Go see the cruising, the car show at the Legion. It's beautiful. Some of the neatest cars I've ever seen. The lady that won the Car of the Year last year was a 57 De Soto.
Yep.
Remember that?
Yep.
That was just.
It was one of the prizes.
I've never seen so many beautiful cars. Great. So.
And it's all over the board. It's from the street rods to the customs to the factory. So it's open to all cars.
Great. We look forward to it. It'll be a fun week, and thank you so much for the effort. So.
Thanks, Mr.
Yeah, with that, we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, we're on to 5C, which is to proclaim music in Kelly Park on June 16, 23rd, 30, July 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th, and some dates in August, as well as a community festival. And our old friend Mary is with us this evening. Mary?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and council members. It's always a pleasure to be back here with great friends. You're a wonderful city council. Don't you think so? Don't you think they're great? Well, today is a wonderful day for us because it's our, this year is our 25th anniversary of the Apple Valley Arts Foundation. And I don't know where that time went, but it is amazing that we're here at 25 years. The 2023 Music in Kelly Park Concert Series is going to be a wonderful event this year. And we have food and beverages available for purchase, as well as free prizes and drawings. The music performances are brought to you by a great group of people, the Apple Valley Arts Foundation. I am the co-chair. This would have been Karen Kirkman, who is my, not co-president, Karen Kirkman, my co-president, but unfortunately, she couldn't be here at that moment. I'm hearing.
Pat.
Pat's here. Pat's here.
I'm here.
Yes, she's one of our great partners too. So this is put on by a group of really dedicated residents and citizens of this area and Apple Valley. And we want to thank the Apple Valley Arts Foundation for their commitment to our community. So the Music in Kelly Park Concert Series has a bit of a different time this year. We noticed during the pandemic, it worked out better. So from 6:30 to 8:30 PM will be the concerts. So get there early if you can, because it always fills up. And I think, in particular, this year will be really very packed because of the wonderful postcard that was sent out by our Park and Recreation. 6:30 to 8:30 PM, it is free. The next, the first concert is June 16th, Salsa del Sol. You got to put on your dancing shoes. It's going to be terrific. The Alex Rossi Band will be on June 23rd, and we will have at that event our platinum sponsor, who is Think Bank, will be out there. We'll have bicycles that we'll be giving away with helmets that evening. And we are going to be celebrating that the mayor and council have prioritized the monarch butterfly for its preservation. And so we have the master gardeners who will be out there. We have the Apple Valley Eco Advocates who will be joining us, as well as the Dakota County Natural Resources. So that's going to be, and there'll be a monarch butterfly that will be floating around, a person in costume. So that will be lots of fun. On June 30th, we have Michael Monroe. He's a standard. People love and come out for him. This year, on July the 7th, the Dakota Valley Symphony will be themed movie, movie magic. We're so happy to have them back. They're wonderful performers. And then on July the 14th, Lori Doken presents I Am Woman, Hear Me Roar, that presents all of the standards of female artists. And then if you like country-western music, July the 21st, we have Hitchville. And on July the 28th, our very own McFail will be out there, the Community Youth Choir with JD Steel. And then on August 4th, Power of 10. And August 11th, Riverside All Stars wrapping that up that night with giving away bicycles and helmets. So get out there and make sure you put your name in, register for those prizes. So we want to thank, we couldn't do this without our sponsors. And thank you, Mayor, for recognizing the sponsors that help us, not only for the Freedom Days, but also for Music in Kelly Park. Think Mutual Bank was our platinum sponsor, and they began to be a sponsor even before they opened their doors. So that tells you, and they have committed to that. We're very grateful to them. Bogart's Entertainment Center is also platinum sponsor. Our gold sponsors, next slide, Upanore North America, you all know who they are. The American Legion, post 1776, always a great sponsor for us. And Nicole Junker Realty, ExP Realty. And our silver sponsors, Doherty, Melinda, Soulfest Hills and Bauer PA, wonderful sponsors. Our Wings Financial, a great institution in our, in our community of Apple Valley. And Valley Bike and Ski, who helps provide us with the bikes and helmets for our prizes. But we also have other sponsors, and we want to give recognition to our Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce, our Apple Valley Rotary, who will be out there. And this year, I don't know, will we be having, Councilmember Goodwin, will we be having a car or bicycles or anything out there? Or Mayor?
We are doing a slightly different fundraiser this year in a pickleball tournament, which we can talk about later, because I don't want to steal any of your thunder.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because I just realized when I said your name, are you going to have something out there? The Apple Valley Parks and Recreation, and I want to recognize in particular Eric Carlson. Eric has been a fabulous partner for us. He's, we know that if we have information that we need and we turn to him, he's always there for us, and we really appreciate that. The Dakota County Tribune has been great at publicizing Sam's Club, Speed Pro, U-Haul, Valley County, Valley Bike and Ski, and Walmart. So this year, our food vendors are going to be, are going to be Lost Ortiz, Rita's Italian Ice, Ray's Barbecue, Cave Cafe, and Pizza Karma. We're pretty excited about your new restaurant that has come to Apple Valley. So the music performance is again brought to you by the Apple Valley Arts Foundation in partnership with all our great sponsors. It is our 25th anniversary, and we would welcome you all, Mayor and City Council, and all of staff, and everyone that's here tonight, and everyone in the community, to come out and enjoy great music at Music in Kelly Park Concert Series. Thank you so much. And I believe there's a proclamation. So.
There certainly is. Are there any questions? If not, we would take the.
Oh, yes, thank you. Are you going to have the video for us?
Food and fun, and we have just what you're looking for on Friday nights with Music in Kelly Park, presented by the Apple Valley Arts Foundation. Come listen to great music all summer long. And this year, we have a terrific lineup of entertainment that kicks off Friday on June 16th with the exciting Latin vibes of Salsa del Sol. On Friday, June 23rd, come listen to Minneapolis R&B soul artist and his group, the Alex Rossi Band. And we close out the month with the acoustic folk guitar of Michael Monroe on June 30th. Our July concerts kick off on the 7th with Dakota Valley Symphony playing music from your favorite movies. On July 14th, we have a special performance presented by Lori Doken in her all-female rhythm section called I Am Woman, Hear Me Roar, where they'll be celebrating the songs from the greatest female singers and songwriters. On the 21st, if you're a country music fan, you won't want to miss one of Midwest best country bands, Hitchville. We close out the month with a festival favorite, JD Steel and McFail Community Youth Choir that performs dynamic pop, jazz, and African music on July 28th. And if you like to dance, we have two rocking concerts in August, beginning on the 4th, with the Power of 10, featuring their high-energy rhythm and horn section. We close out our concert series on August 11th with the Riverside All Stars, Minnesota's premier party band. If listening to all that music makes you hungry, be sure to stop at one of the many food venues we have available to satisfy all your cravings. Plus, remember to sign up for some great prizes, including these awesome bikes provided by Valley Bike and Ski. And don't forget, Kelly Park is a great place to bring your family to its huge playground and splash pad. Music in Kelly Park is sponsored by Think Bank and Bogart's Entertainment Center, so be sure to thank them for their support. For more information, visit applevalleyartsfoundation.org or go to the city's website at applevalleymn.gov, where you'll find a link to concert dates and other information. Music in Kelly Park, Apple Valley's premier concert venue, every Friday night throughout the summer. Concerts start at 6:30, but the fun lasts all night long.
We want to thank Harry. He did such a great job on that video and everybody that worked on it. So thank you again. A wonderful partnership with the City of Apple Valley.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution and proclaim music in Kelly Park as a community festival?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal and the second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To the Arts Foundation. Also, I'd like to recognize the Arts Foundation for supporting us at Midwinter Fest again this year with live music for that event. So.
Well, we're very happy to be able to do it. We're your wonderful partners, and everything that we can do to work together makes us stronger. So thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to 5D, I just want to recognize that Pat Seshul joined us, and you absolutely, you absolutely may, you have, you have put way too much heart and soul into Freedom Days to not give you a minute. So.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize for the lateness, but I traveled in from Cloquet, and I ran into some traffic.
Imagine that.
In St. Paul, imagine that.
Yeah.
So anyway, I understand my cohort has taken care of everything for us. And so we're, I have my, I have, I made this trip down just for you, Councilman Bergman, because I didn't want you to miss out on, I know you told me that you would miss that, and I wanted you to have it. So.
These are well-done folks.
I look forward to these every year. I know it. I know it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I just want to remind everybody that our event is starting a little bit different this year. It's starting on June 28th with Casting with the Cops over at Cobblestone. And then our next event will be June 30th, which is the car show at the Legion. And we always want to thank the Legion for their participation. And we also want to remind everybody about the concert at Kelly Park. And then I just want to touch on this Saturday at the Senior Center, there'll be root beer floats. It's on the website. I'm not sure what time it is, but I'm sure Pat touched it. So if you're in the area, just stop. But our festivities are all good. They're all the same, except we've added a new feature for the pre-fireworks party up at Johnny Cake. We've added Rockin' Woody. And so it's live music this year. Actually, not a DJ, but, which is live, obviously, but, but it's music. So thank you for your support. We thank everybody. We thank the City of Apple Valley and the administration, the city police department and fire department, and all the departments in Apple Valley for your continued support. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're glad you made it down.
Yes, yep. Thank you.
It would have been the same without you here.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item, we'll move on to item 5D, which is the Apple Valley High School turf field accessory storage building. And Kathy has this item and the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. This item I decided to put together because the facts of the two cases are so similar. I'll branch off in a bit, but I'll begin by saying good evening. The petitioner for this request is Independent School District 196. They recently completed construction of artificial turf playfields at each of the district's high schools. In 2021, they've finished the projects at Apple Valley High School and Eastview High School. In connection with those projects, they installed pads, concrete pads beside the fields that are 30 by 50 in size, 1,500 square feet, to serve as a platform for constructing accessory storage buildings. So what is being requested by the two schools, Apple Valley High School is requesting a CUP variance to increase the size of the storage building from 1,400 to 1,500, and a variance to increase the maximum number of storage buildings. For Eastview, they only need the CUP and the size variance, 1,400 to 1,500. So Apple Valley High School, 14450 Hayes Road, Eastview High School, 6200, 140th Street West. Both of the schools are zoned P institutional under the zoning district. And in that zoning designation, one storage building, 750 square feet or smaller, is a permitted use. In order to go with a larger building, you need to get a conditional use permit. There are four criteria, and this is where the variances are coming in. One of the criteria is trying to limit the size of those buildings to 1,400 square feet. So there, the school district is asking to go up to 1,500 for both, both buildings, both schools. And then a second condition is that no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted on a lot or parcel. In the case of Apple Valley High School, they have five accessory storage buildings. This would be number six. So starting with Apple Valley High School, the new turf field is north of the high school building. The pad site is on the southeast corner. And this is a view of the pad in plan view. The floor plan shows the 30 by 50 building. Nothing too exciting here. Overhead door and utility door on two sides of the building are proposed. And then the exterior is pretty straightforward, utility building, lap siding, gable end roof, asphalt shingle. At Eastview High School, in this case, the school district updated the existing stadium feel, and the new pad is on the southwest corner of the site. And again, seeing it in plan view, the 30 by 60 pad, I'm sorry, 30 by 50. And floor plan, exactly the same as the previous one. Here, the same thing, maybe a different color, but lap siding, gable end roof, asphalt shingled. In order to grant a variance, the city has to find, must find, that the petitioner meets the requirements of the city code and state statutes regarding practical difficulties. The Planning Commission reviewed this yesterday, last night, and they worked very carefully through the definition of practical difficulties. the definition of practical difficulties and the factors to determine whether a practical difficulty exists on the site. The upshot is, after their review, the size of the school properties, the high school, the high use and high demand for the artificial turf fields, significant inefficiencies resulting from storing sports equipment and maintenance equipment, a long distance from the playfields, and the minimum impacts that would result on neighboring residential properties. The Planning Commission found that that met the city code requirements, so they were comfortable with it. They did provide nine of their findings, then. And with that, Mr. Mayor, last night, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the two buildings at the two schools. Based on the findings, the nine findings mentioned and subject to conditions in the two resolutions, updated resolutions were distributed for the variance pieces. So, the following motions, then, would approve the project in accordance with the Planning Commission recommendation for Apple Valley High School, Actions 1 through 3, and then for Eastview High School, it would be Actions 1 and 2. So, with that, I could take questions if there are any.
Questions for Kathy, pretty thorough update. All right, if there are none, we will work our way through the items here on 5D first. First item is to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for 1,500-square-foot accessory storage building in the P, which is the institutional zone.
Motion.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Malander, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that item carries, let's see, D2 is the adopt a resolution approving a variance to increase the maximum size accessory storage building from 1,400 square feet to 1,500 square feet.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Goodwin, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries, the final resolution on this item is to adopt a resolution approving a variance to increase the maximum number of accessory storage buildings from 2 to 6.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Malander, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well. You okay if I move on to the, to the rest of them, Kathy, or you have other items?
Please, yep, yep.
So, we'll move on to 5E, to adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit for 1,500-square-foot accessory storage building in the P institutional zone. Do we have a motion for that item?
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Bergman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries, and our last one on this is to adopt a resolution approving the variance to increase the maximum size accessory storage building from 1,400 square feet to 1,500 square feet.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Malander, a second from Councilmember Goodwin, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, takes care of both D and E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 5F, which is to adopt a resolution approving a site plan and building permit authorization for 3,319-square-foot retail building for Chase Bank. And this one is for, Alex has this one.
Good evening, council. I don't think I'll be able to get through two items in one, but it should go relatively quick. Maybe not.
He's your boss.
Roll start. The action this evening would be to adopt a resolution approving a site plan building for a permit authorization for approximately 3,300 square foot Chase Bank. Location is in the southeast corner of 155th Street and Pilot Knob Road. It is one of the three lots that was platted as part of the Lund's Byerly's plat. So, the plat was already approved. The only action required is a site plan building permit authorization. The site is zoned a general retail business, which a bank is a permitted use within the zone. The overall site plan, the primary reason why I share this is because the entire site plan was essentially approved through the Lund's Byerly's site plan approval in terms of its interconnectivity and private road entrances. You'll notice that the Chase Bank is accessed off of the western side English Avenue. I'll bring up an aerial photo in a moment that'll help, or I'm sorry, I just brought up the aerial photo previously that showed that access point. It will all be private access to this site. Specific to the Chase Bank site, there will be pedestrian access out to Pilot Knob Road. They have a sidewalk connection there, as well as pedestrian connection and vehicular connection to the wider site plan through that western side of the site. The site plan shows a 3,319-square-foot building with drive-through and escape lane, fairly standard configuration, very consistent, very consistent with the existing Chase Bank location here in town already. That trend will continue through the elevations, which we will get to momentarily. As with other aspects of the site, the stormwater was previously approved. It is a regional stormwater system that this site feeds into, and therefore, there is no underground specific infiltration for this site. It is set up through that more regional system that is piped off-site. Utilities are served off a pilot knob, and this also shows some of those underground stormwater utilities. We are still seeking some updated items on the landscape plan. Those will be able to come in at the time of the building permit. What we're looking for is some additional species diversity to meet some of our regulations there. We would like a nursery bid list as well. Previously, when we worked with Chase Bank on the existing site, we were able to utilize things such as screening for utilities towards some of that landscape budget. So, we're confident we'll be able to meet, so it's just some of those final details that come in at the time of building permit. One other item of note is that staff is still encouraging any environmental considerations to the building type, whether they include electric car charging or even more efficient windows, et cetera. We have been able to utilize our landscape budget towards those, specifically on a site like a bank, where sometimes the larger trees are more problematic due to security reasons. So, we are cognizant and want to work with the applicant, and we'll still be working through those minor details. The interior floor plan shows offices and meeting places for several staff. It actually has a very similar site or interior floor plan to the existing building, largely with just some of the worthy entrances and hallways have been shifted. The elevations actually reflect exactly what we see with the existing structure and what was approved previously. The one aspect that we sought that was above and beyond was some additional facade breakup through this window in the back. And then, what we have at the existing site is a screening over the top of these utilities, which we will seek a similar screening type out of this project as well. East and west elevations are largely similar with the alteration that this will not be a drive-up window with teller service. This will just be a drive-up with ATM service, so that is a change from their existing location. And then, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval on May 17th. The applicant is present, if you have any additional questions, otherwise I stand for questions as well.
All right, do we have any questions for Alex? John?
I don't have any questions, but I have two comments. Number one, this whole entire area, and I've talked about it before, and we all have, is a phenomenal project all the way down Pilot Knob. I was out in that area last evening, and in the meantime, this facility is being built, there's a couple more. If you get a chance, go down and you'll see the Byerly's, that's an unbelievable building. My, my second comment is, and we're doing a bank tonight, okay? During the last election, we as a council kind of got beat up by people wanting to run for these positions about how come we have so many banks in, in Apple Valley. And I think we've done a good job of promoting why it's, all these banks are welcome in our community, which they are. But to see another bank that's already existing in this community go to the, what I call the east side of town, welcome and, and thanks a lot, but it goes to show that they're still in need and there's still a desire for these type of, type of facilities in our community, so, thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Goodwin?
Councilmember Bergman beat me to it. I just wanted to compliment the folks that are building this, this whole development, what a wonderful, it just looks great. Everything we've done south there, now the new Lund's and Byerly's, and now a new clinic. I could think it was a gravel pit not that long ago. It's just amazing. And I want to compliment the, the developers and the owners and the staff and everything they've done so far. It's just beautiful.
All right, if there are no other questions, we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving a site plan and building permit authorization for a 3,319-square-foot retail building for Chase Bank.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Grendal, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. Thank you, Alex, and look forward to seeing the building get started. The next item on our agenda is 5G, which is ordinances regulating short-term rentals. This is the second reading for this, these items, and Tim Benetti has this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is two ordinances regulating our short-term rental. We have two actions before you tonight, passing an ordinance for Chapter 122 and a separate one for Chapter 155, which we'll get into some details here later. So, this is a reminder of what we did just a few weeks ago. So, you're looking at proposing an amendment to city code sections 155, 03, 382, 363, along with that separate section, 122.03. Currently, the code does not allow for short-term residential rental of residential homes. So, as this makes dwelling use for commercial lodging, as we've stated previously, and we've indicated in our previous reports and our analysis. So, this new language is simply providing a strengthening of the current code on these regulations and provides some clarity to the original intent and purpose of these sections. So, again, your amended definitions under 155, 003, highlighted here is the new language that is underlined and also some language that's been struck in, or struck, struck out, meaning it will be eliminated. Again, we're adding language to home occupation, again, this is underlined. And also for residential districts, this is, this is where we, we, where rubber meets road on this amendment, that the dwelling which are inhabited and occupied exclusively as the occupants' home or household which should not be less than a period of 30 consecutive days, except in the case of family care home or licensed daycare. So, what we're saying here is you cannot have a short-term rental for less than 30 days or less. And again, those homes or properties that have the ability to an accessory dwelling unit are not allowed as well. Short-term rental is also being prohibited under 155, 363. And again, we've added our inability not to register these under our Section 122 for any type of rental housing. So, March 15th, our Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on these amendments. We did receive a number of comments, both for and against, and they are noted for the record. We also conducted a second meeting on April 5th, where the, whereas the Planning Commission did reopen the amendment and allow for public comments. Unfortunately, that motion to approve the ordinance failed on a 3-3 tie vote, which is no action. You may remember that there was a subsequent motion to study this, and we brought that to you at a follow-up May 11, 2023 meeting. For your opportunity to make that consideration, you decided to forego that for now, study it at this time, and bring it back if it needs to be. And at May 25th, you directed staff to bring the first reading of those ordinances to you at the May 25th meeting. You did allow some comments at that meeting as well. Also, you have received a number of letters and comments, as indicated by City Administrator Lowell. You did receive a number of those as well tonight. So, with that, we are still recommending to pass the ordinance amending Chapter 122 and that part of ordinance, Chapter 155, in your packets. If you have any questions on those, I'll take those at this time, or our city attorney can address those as well.
Thank you, Tim. We'll start with questions for, Tim, or the city attorney from council, if there are any. Pardon me, this is a, somebody jump in here, hang on one second. Poor timing there. This is the, the second reading. We have received a number of comments. Some folks could not be here last time. I would like to offer the opportunity for the public who would like to speak at this second reading or have their comments heard to do so, since we do have a second reading opportunity. Is anyone who would like to speak from the public to this item? Please come forward, state your name, if you, and address for the record, if you could, and welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Sam Humphreys, and I am the homeowner at 13120 Doyle's Court. I reside at 4746 137th Street, which is about five minutes from the home on Doyle's Court. I want to address you tonight because last time the council met and discussed STR properties, the tone around this topic was pretty negative. However, there are always two sides to every issue, and I'd like to share some thoughts from the perspective of a person who is in favor of STR properties. I truly believe STR properties are a good thing, if they are operated properly. My wife Natalie and I are very careful with the STR property we operate on Doyle's Court, which is the property that is most likely the root cause of the STR debate in our city. I believe a common perception of STRs is the Super Bowl party scene, or the house of all the young adults that rented it for a weekend to throw a raging kegger. Cars everywhere, violence, people being noisy and disruptive in the yard. Nobody wants that in their neighborhood, and that is not what is happening in Doyle's Court. The people that come to stay at Doyle's Court are coming to the area to spend quiet time with their friends and family. These are groups of people just like you and me, hard-working, honest, and respectful people that have loved ones in the Apple Valley area, and for a variety of reasons, would like to spend their time together in a comfortable home, rather than in a small hotel room in a nearby city. Even if there were more hotel options in Apple Valley, a hotel room can't offer the same experience that an STR can. Another perception issue is this concern about strangers coming and going out of our neighborhoods because of an operating STR. The reality is, strangers come and go out of every Apple Valley neighborhood all the time, regardless if there's an STR in that neighborhood. We've all seen the DoorDash delivery folks, the contractors performing various residential jobs, the door-to-door salespeople, and the family on the street that regularly has dinner parties or backyard barbecues. All of these situations bring people to our neighborhoods that we don't know, and those situations have always existed. Saying strangers shouldn't come and go from STR is no different than the person that has a piano studio in their home and has anywhere from 20 to 30 piano students come and go for lessons each week. The neighbors of the music teacher don't know any of the students, and everything is fine. Aren't the city streets of Apple Valley a public place where people are free to come and go? Don't we want Apple Valley to be a warm, inviting community, where people feel welcome when they come for a youth soccer tournament, trip to the zoo, or to see a set of grandparents that may not have the space to accommodate out-of-town visitors? A properly-operated STR brings people to the neighborhood that have all been vetted, which among other things means they have been proven to be responsible renters in other communities. Or they are people the STR operators have an established relationship with due to personal and/or community connections. We don't allow anyone to come to our STR that hasn't agreed to the terms and conditions and who doesn't already have a proven track record of responsibly and respectfully staying at other STR properties. Most of the time, the people that stay in our STR have booked it four to six months in advance. Anyone that has their life in order to that degree doesn't come to a neighborhood to disturb or otherwise be disrespectful. The only short notice groups we accept are people traveling for funerals. Those groups simply want to be together during a difficult time. There is no party happening. Another perception issue is the frequently mentioned loss of community. We still mow the grass, pull the weeds, shovel the snow, and take out the trash at our home on Doyle's Court. We are there all the time and always wave and say hi to the neighbors. In fact, some of our closest friends are adjacent property owners to our home on Doyle's Court. Additionally, there are plenty of other homes in the neighborhood. The property we own on Doyle's Court is only one of dozens of residential homes that make up the community. The argument can be made that the multiple long-term rentals in the neighborhood have a much more adverse impact on the community for various reasons. I can appreciate the perception that is held by some adjacent property owners regarding STRs, as they are still relatively new to society. However, prohibiting STRs based on the perception that the neighborhood is somehow unsafe or that property values are going to drop is doing so based on assumptions and/or emotions. On the other hand, prohibiting STRs would without a doubt cause financial hardship for numerous members of our community. Over the past several years, many Apple Valley families and individuals have turned to operating an STR as a to operating an STR as a way to make ends meet. The inflated econo, the inflated economy we are all experiencing has made the STR income all the more important. And finally, prohibiting STRs would create a situation where numerous good respectable people would have a major wrench thrown in their upcoming travel plans. The perceived impacts of STRs by a few community members that are uncomfortable with strangers coming into their neighborhood is potentially driving a prohibition that will significantly impact the financial security and the property rights of other community members. However, STR arrangements should only concern the property owner where it's taking place, and does not need to involve adjacent property owners or other community members. Properly operated STRs are fully equipped with front and back video surveillance. So even if the operator isn't on site, they can keep a pulse on who is coming and going to ensure the home and the neighborhood is safe. I can appreciate the concerns of adjacent property owners on Doyle's Court, and can empathize the concerns they have about community connectedness and the ideal village to raise a family in. However, there's no way that anyone can control who buys the home next door, the home across the street, or dictate the level of friendliness or community involvement those neighbors may or may not demonstrate. However, as an STR operator, we do have full control of who stays at the home, and are very committed to maintaining a safe and appealing neighborhood. If you haven't already, my request to city council is to go back and view the footage of the other community members that have testified in previous meetings on why they do not support prohibiting the numerous STR properties that are currently operating in Apple Valley. A lot of good info has been shared, and should be considered before a decision is made on this issue. The city planning commission believes it's worth their time to take a closer look at STR properties, which is also something I hope would be taken into consideration by this council. And finally, just like you can lose your license for irresponsibly operating a motor vehicle, other municipalities have set up regulation that issues and revokes licenses for STR operators. This is one way Apple Valley can ensure everyone's rights are considered and protected. Nobody wants to see poorly managed, nobody wants to see a poorly managed STR in Apple Valley, but flat-out prohibiting them is undemocratic. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
Any questions?
Council have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Mayor. This ordinance is just strengthening what we had before. And as a homeowner myself, do I like these kind of facilities or these kind of things? In other states, I've been to them, and they're way out in the country. I can use Albuquerque, New Mexico, Taos, Taos. I can use an area in Arizona, which is, and also, I would say, the wine country, but they are not in a neighborhood that is next door, excuse me, next door to next door to next door in housing. I also find, in looking at all this information and doing, and doing research, that I guess you can say the city of Eagan doesn't allow it. Lakeville has two times in a 30-day stretch. We've always said no to it, and these rules are tightened up. I've heard the good and the bad of it, and I, and everybody has a reason why they want to do it today, and so do I personally, but I will not say what I want to say about me personally, about why I would not, why I didn't go down that road. But I believe these, again, when I bought my house, I thought there was going to, for one thing, was going to be a cul-de-sac in, in my neighborhood at the end of the road. I let my house be used as a model home for four extra months. I go back to move in, and four months later, and the street goes, goes through. I go to city staff, and the city staff says to me, you don't always believe what's on a blueprint from your realtor, and it is what it is today. But as far as tightening these regulations, I think it's necessary. I believe that all of us as residents of this community, and even I, did not go to city and find out what is allowed and what is not allowed. I believe that should have been done with all the residents that want to do this. It should have been done a long time ago. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Goodwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Community Development Director. I think one of the reasons we're here is that there's been a number of complaints. I wonder if you could expand on that? Have there been a number of complaints? Maybe kind of run through them? These are probably neighbors of the people.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct. Part of our reasoning for bringing this forward in the, in the first place was a number of complaints that were received through our code enforcement division in our Community Development Department. As part of our investigation, we determined through interaction with the homeowners and with some indications by public comments, that there are a few short-term rentals being operated or run in this community. And you've heard, or seen, or read some of those complaints from personal testimony given by those neighbors. They range from just the transient activity, the level of noise, the activity, the partying, in some case, a police call, just the, the overuse of parking along the street and the cul-de-sac. So those are complaints that, you know, have been brought forward to you for your consideration. You've also seen a number of supporters for this as well. So there's, there's, you know, there's always going to be a pro versus a con on, on any argument when you're regulating these. Just for the record, we've, we've always stated that, you know, I think there's been this misperception that we're, we're, we're taking these, that right away from these people.
No.
We never had the right to do this in the first place. These, we were, these short-term rentals were always declared an illegal use, not allowed use. And we've now have some type of evidence or indications that there is a, a number of short-term rentals being advertised on Airbnb, the RBO. We can see them, but we just can't find them. And usually, we respond to them on a reactive measure by complaints. And that's why we have currently three, potentially four, property owners under review for that violation of our ordinance, due to a complaint or complaints.
Thank you.
Do you have something else you'd flip your eye back on?
Yes, I, I moved here 43 years ago, bought a single-family home in Palomino Hills, which gives you an idea how long I've been here, because that was one of the newest subdivisions at the time. And I fully intended to buy in a single-family neighborhood. That's what I was doing. Now, our neighbors and I became very close, and I just would not like something like this near me. There's an argument that, that people maybe could use some of the income to help, you know, pay for the home, I guess. I'm not sure that's why you should buy a home, if you have to get rent to, to subsidize it. I really don't. That's just my view. I never do something like that. We have complaints. That's enough. Now, people, people have said, well, we can, you know, we can be a good, we, we only allow certain folks in and all that, that's fine. You never know when something's going to go. The question I would have to people who, we've had a lot of, a lot of letters from realtors, the question, I would ask the realtors, if you were living in a single-family home and the homeless next, problem, home next to you was a problem, would you be happy? And I don't believe they would be. So my view is that I haven't changed my mind on this issue at all. And again, we're not taking anything away from anybody. All we're doing is strengthening an ordinance we have. So thank you.
Councilmember Melander.
Mr. Mayor, Tim, I, I spent a lot of years on the planning commission and ran into versions of this same sort of a thing. Somebody buys a house, has a property next to a vacant lot, and you think, boy, this is a swell place, and a dear I could board it, and I'll always have this. And they find out that it's zone for a apartment building, and if somebody wants to build a department building, and lo and behold, this is a travesty. How can they do this to me? When I first started on planning was when Regatta got built, and they, they jumped the gun building a lot of those residences over there, and, and the, the new residents went crazy. All the sand and grit, and the dust, the stuff in the air, and, well, it's kind of incumbent to find out what the rules are, I guess, before you start operating. I am a big proponent of individual rights, and, you know, I've got a right to do what my property is my property. But I don't have the right to use my property in such a way that it impinges on Ruth's right to enjoy her property. And, and obviously, this has caused some problems. We rented these VRBOs ourselves on several occasions for at least a month. It's tough to find anything for less than a month, if somebody loaned a rent to you. And I can certainly understand the transient nature, and it just lends a different feel to things. So it's, it's, it's tough for me to support. I don't want to come across as, as being, you know, hard and rules are rules sort of thing, but, you know, it shouldn't have come up as a problem in the first place. Find out if you can do it, and if you can do it, do it, but.
Any other comments? What's the desire of the council on the item?
Hold on.
I'm ready to move on.
I'm ready to move on.
I have a, I have a few comments, but we'd have you take a motion if there are, if there's a motion.
You can make your motion, you speak your, what you would like to say first.
Oh, we, good, if you're, you're private.
I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make my comments. I think my, my challenge with this, right, I was one of the people asked this to come forward, because in my mind, despite Tim and staff's and city attorney's interpretation of those words, I don't believe them to be clear in their current writing. I think most people would look at an ordinance, a property in a neighborhood, and say, that's a house being used for house things, right? People are sleeping there, cooking there, whatever, right? I don't, I think from the average person, and I would say Doyle's Court, or, or, forks, excuse me, would probably have agreed with that, is they bought that house, they planned to use it for things like people use a house in. I think that's different than somebody buying a house and opening a retail shop in it and having people come through, where we feel that was truly a kind of a commercial purpose. And making the ordinance clear is, if we're going to have the, the requirement, we need to be clear on the requirement. I'm, I'm challenged by a ban when we're trying to get to activities, however, in this. And so how far do we want to go with this in other things? We could ban calls that come to bars by banning all bars in Apple Valley, for example, but instead, we built rules around those. Many of these things that are talked about occur in other properties as well, right? So we get, you could have a, somebody sign a year to lease, or move their buddies into their house and have eight cars in there. Would we rather deal with a number of cars in the driveway because it occurs in other places, or would we rather deal with banning a specific use? I'm not sure 30 days actually solves a problem, right? If you, if your concern is that people you don't know are through the neighborhood, well, 30 days at a time, you're still not going to get to know those people any better than you knew them before. And so I was happy to see the planning commission come out and say, we should study this more and figure out what we want to do. As the community gets older, as people use properties differently, we have rental properties that are at least longer term than 30 days, that have exactly all of these same problems and issues and concerns. We have homes that are owned by individuals who have all of these same, you know, some of the biggest code complaint issues and the longest-running ones that Community Development and Code Enforcement staff have been owner-occupied properties where we've, we've had to go to court. So ownership doesn't stop the problem, right? It, it, so let's deal with the problems, not necessarily the use, is what I would prefer to see us do. On this ordinance, if we can't get there, I'd at least like to see us make it clear, so the expectation is clear coming in. So that's kind of where I'm standing on this one. I wish we would have taken some time to, to study and figure out what the right actual ordinance and answer was. But that's not, was not the direction that the council chose to take, so. That's now where I'm at on this issue. I think as I put it to somebody else, you know, we're kind of using a shotgun to solve a problem a pellet gun might resolve. Councilmember Grendel.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly respect what you have to say, but, but we're not taking any rights away. They didn't have the right to do this anyway. And so I think we have to move on this. We can certainly study it, you know, after we move on this tonight, but we've spent a lot of time on this. And I mean, I've rented Airbnbs and VRBO.com, I mean, but they're in the Finger Lakes, and they're by a university when I went to graduations. It's not in, next door to me. Anyway, so I, I'm ready to move on this tonight, and if we want to study it and have the planning commission look at it and see if something should change, but right now, they can't do it anyway. So we need to clarify it.
I'm ready to move on. Somebody needs to make a motion to do so.
So moved. Make a motion to pass ordinance amending Chapter 122 of the City Code regarding rental registration regulation.
So moved.
I think we had a motion from Goodwin.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Bergman. Any other discussion? I think I would like to see us come back with a study soon, if we're going to move this forward, so we can get to the issues behind it. We have a motion and a second on the table. Councilmember Grendel.
I'm not sure what you're asking for, for a study. I said we can always have the option to study, but I'm not saying to open up a formal study right now because, because we're clarifying an ordinance.
I think if we're, if we're talking about, we should do a study, but there's no action on the study, that comment doesn't have a whole lot of weight behind it then. It's, we should do something in the future, when are we going to do that? And the reason I say that is, we have other properties that have other issues, and I feel like we're addressing this one particular use, but we're not doing anything to get to the other issues that are also causing pain for neighbors and other people.
And so give me an example of that. What you just stated.
What's that? We, we have, we have plenty of open code compliance complaints all around the city for people not maintaining their properties as well, issues that could be very similar to what we're experiencing in short-term rental. That's all I'm saying. We, we probably, without having any regulations, is we really have no teeth to get behind any of those if people aren't doing their property. That's my, that's my issue, and that's what I've talked about all along.
Mr. Mayor, I find that to be a real leap.
Yeah, that's, that's quite a stretch.
I don't see that connecting that to what we're talking about here tonight.
I have a motion and a, a second, so I think we, we had your comments last time, correct?
Yep.
So I, just in interest of time, I think we know where, where your position is on this, right? You were opposed, right? Because you were in the neighborhood, right? So we had those last time, I don't want to cut you off, but recognize that we had your comments already, and we kind of know where you stood. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will oppose, because I don't like the way we have approached this one. So that passes four to one. So that takes care of this issue.
There, there's a second.
Yes.
There's a second.
I'm sorry. So that was the, thank you. We, we took care of G, excuse me, we took care of G1 on there. Do we have a motion for G2, which is to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 155?
I would make that motion.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
From Councilmember Bergman. All in favor?
Aye.
I will vote no on that one as well. So, thank you, everyone. Thanks for everyone with the comments, right? This is what makes this work, is the chance to have comments and get the feedback. So thank you, everybody, including those who have sent in the emails and made the phone calls. All right, we will move on to item H, which is to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 155, Appendix X, Article 24, Plan Development Number 646, adding drive-through window service in conjunction with a Class III restaurant, and this does include a recommendation to waive the second reading. And Alex, please take us through this item.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, we are seeking action this evening on the ordinance. We are also recommending waiving the second reading. Last evening, Planning Commission did make unanimous recommendation of approval on the draft ordinance. This ordinance amendment affects PD 646, that is outlined here in red, it is the Fisher Marketplace area. Specifically, it only affects the properties located in Zone 2. There are seven properties within Zone 2. I'm more of a aerial photo user for being able to understand where that sits within the community, so I've added that for reference. This shows the seven properties for reference. An amendment similar to this was done several years ago for Krispy Kreme on the far eastern side, and what you side and what used to be the United Educators Credit Union on the eastern property over here. This ordinance amendment is being applied for by Constellation Coffee, who is seeking to occupy the former Eagle Valley Bank. You can see the drive-through in this location at 14698 Galaxy Avenue. The text before you is largely to enhance or fix, correct, some of the existing plan development. Number sevens and, number seven and eight referred to the specific uses after their definition. So the class one and class three restaurants are defined by the text that is stricken essentially. And this was a correction so that it actually refers to the definition that was within the zoning ordinance, with the obvious exception of the drive-through window service being provided being a stricken section. One item that I did highlight to the planning commission last evening was that no more than four of these neighborhood type restaurants shall be allowed within the zone. This is existing within the ordinance currently. This is not a change right now. But what it does limit and provide a little bit of a surety for is that of those seven properties, only four of those would be allowed to drive through because that area is a class three restaurant. So the risk to the overall zone is still relatively mineral, minimal. The new text is here in the underlined, essentially it, its goal was to keep the same regulations that we would see with a conditional use permit. So traditionally, a drive-through restaurant with a class three restaurant for, say, a coffee shop would require a conditional use permit within the city of Apple Valley and most of our other zones. In this case, because it is such a limited plan development with those limitations, we found, staff found it acceptable, working with the city attorney, to place in the same types of conditions that we would have in any of our conditional use permits. So for a coffee user, 13 vehicles of stacking is standard, what we're seeking on site. You will see that on all of our recent coffee developments, whether that be Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, et cetera. And then one of the pieces that we did add to this was the seven vehicles must be able to stack from the order location, not interfering or blocking with parking stalls. The city council and planning commission are not reviewing the site plan as part of this, but it is included in this report, so you will see it as well. We additionally added things like a directional signage plan. The plan needs to be approved by the city engineer, the overall site plan needs to be approved by the city engineer. And then put one final provision in that if an addition is added onto a building specifically for a class three restaurant drive-through, the city council and planning commission would still receive and review a site plan building permit authorization. The primary purpose for this is you are changing a significant facade impact and site impact for a site that wasn't already set up for some form of drive-through. This is the site in question. You can see the seven vehicles present. North is to the left side of your screen. The site will have some minor site alterations to allow for better site traffic flow, so this was a three-car drive-through and now it is a single lane drive-through. I apologize, I used the lane, with additional parking added. At the time of building permit, we will seek that vehicle stacking be shown on the site, but as city council can see, there is more than ample space for the additional vehicles to be shown on this site. The applicant is present this evening and also has an additional brief presentation or narrative that they would like to present if the city council is, has any questions. If you have any questions of me, I stand for questions.
Perfect. Other questions of Alex and then we'll invite Liza up to talk about her project.
Go back. Thanks, Mayor. Could you go back to that last slide that you showed where the, the drive lane was, please? That one right there, please. Okay, so I'm assuming they're coming in off the street and then coming in one way and they're going out the other end or how is, are, are we making clear that it's one way in, one way out?
There are two-way lanes in all of the configurations depending upon the direction that you come from. So our city engineer, I believe, has felt that majority of the traffic will likely come in through the northeast entrance rather than the south entrance. You'll have a right-in access off of Galaxy here, but you cannot take a left into this section because of the median and the center roadway. This is the full access to the site.
Okay, so then they're coming in, they're going where, back along with parking stalls and then turning left and going in the drive lane? That's.
Turning right.
Right. So they're coming in, if I'm coming in to buy coffee, where am I going? Show me my.
Flip back to the aerial photo because I think it will help.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So here's 147th, here's Galaxy, you can see the median. For the users that are headed north on Galaxy, you will likely take a right turn in, coming through here. This is being closed and you will be able to come around and begin your stacking or come around and begin your stacking. For the users that are entering the site from 147th, they will take out, right here, right into the site, likely come down and start beginning doing some of their stacking here. Or if they're seeing that there are enough vehicles stacked here, will have to come around and begin their stacking here, which is why you end up with such significant stacking on this site. So you can end up with either having them start right here where they can then do additional stacking this direction or all the way up here before they're ever impacting a city One of the reasons why we were requiring a wayfinding signage plan is to help work out some of those pieces. So those are the pieces that we are putting into the ordinance that the city engineer and community development director or their designees need to be able to evaluate. That is something that the ordinance sets up rather than working out the actual specifics of the site during, at this point. We're, we're aware that the site has enough stacking for significant vehicles.
And, and that's the deal because on that one side along, what is it?
Foliage.
Yeah, foliage or, all that parking stuff right now is, is there, then you bring me and somebody else down that road, then you got going out from getting a coffee. Is that going to be conflicting? That's my only question because coffee is a big hot commodity. I totally get it. I totally get that this used to be a bank and it would work. I just, again, looking at a couple other or one other coffee off of 147th and Cedar, it kind of stacks up. I just don't want a, a mess there. That's the only reason I question.
The difference in this site though is that if there is a mess, it's going to occur within the site, within the site and be the property owner's issue versus stacking out into the street and impeding other businesses. So that to me is the difference.
Mayor Hoopa, Councilor Bergman, the average coffee site, because I've worked on two of them, is around .6 acres. This is more than double.
Right, right. I just, just.
We've, we've got ample room on this site.
Yep.
Where that stacking before it would reach out to a city right of way.
I'm, I'm fine. I just, just clearing it up.
Thanks, John. Let's invite the applicant forward. I know she's got a few comments for us and then we can move on to any action items. Welcome, Liza.
Still learning how to do this. So I'm starting a coffee shop called Constellation Coffee and we picked that name because we're on Galaxy Avenue. And our thought is, is that when the stars align, anything can happen. The whole point of Constellation Coffee, if I can do this right, oh, look at that. The story behind it, if some of you know, I have a son that's on the autism spectrum. When he was diagnosed at two and a half, this is back in 2002, nobody really knew what that was going to be for most, most of this epidemic, right? It's gotten to be unfortunately, a lot more common. My son is doing incredibly well. He just finished up his second year in college and I am sure in my heart that this kid's going to make it, right? He's going to be just fine. But unlike my son, who has had the resources and the backing and the family that can help him, not all individuals have that kind of help. Eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent of those that are, have autism or are disabled don't have gainful employment. It's a harsh reality of, of being disabled, if you want to use that as a term. One in four people in the United States are considered disabled. And in Minnesota, 882,000 adults have a disability. The gap between regular working people, neurotypical people, and the disabled just keeps on widening. And although Minnesota does a much better job than other states and we are, we do have good services, they're still lacking. Constellation Coffee's mission is to provide jobs to capable adults with developmental disabilities or physical disabilities. We're creating opportunities for employees to make meaningful contributions to Apple Valley. We want this to be a community site, establishing an atmosphere for customers with diverse needs to come to Constellation Coffee. We're setting our sites to not only employ the disabled, which could be anywhere from, you know, a loss of a limb or in a wheelchair, could be Down Syndrome, it could be autism, could be a mental disability. We're open to anyone that wants to come and work if we have the ability. And my ultimate goal is to employ as many as we can, to incorporate as many of these individuals into our community as possible. And, and we've taken the time to choose materials and acoustical tiling and flooring that is going to make it much more acceptable, not only to our workers, but families that come. And, and I've been told from many people that they want to come and support us with their disabled children. And, and noise and lights and all that is a real hindrance to these kids. And I say kids, anybody younger than I am is a kid, maybe you. What can Apple Valley do? Here's the deal. The drive-through window, we're calling a courtesy window. For the fact that we aren't a national coffee shop, we don't expect people around the building to come and get coffee. What we're expecting is that families and individuals that are disabled are going to need access because they want to support us. The reality is, is once people understand what we're doing, they're not going to sit in line for an hour as we have somebody that might work a little slower trying to serve the coffee or even a disabled person in the car trying to get to the coffee shop. A lot of these people that want to support us just don't have the ability to get in even though we have a handicap accessible building. We've got people that are driving that are disabled. I had a cousin that had polio since he was 12 and he did everything completely independently. But it's a barrier. So we are intending to eliminate as many barriers as we can for the Apple Valley residents and families. I'm going to show you some examples of, of people. The parents of, of these kids, one of them is an engineer that's been up before this council many times. They have three children in a wheelchair, in wheelchairs. They'd really like to support us, but can you imagine trying to get three children in wheelchairs out and into a, into a, a coffee shop? It's just not going to happen. But this way, they can still support us and come, come to the coffee shop through the courtesy window. I have a lot of friends whose parents are starting to fail and they're all in walkers. And in good weather like this, this young woman who's, young woman who's in, that assisted living down the street can come with her aid during good weather and come and maybe have a cup of coffee. But in the winter, it's just, I don't care how I clear the street and how I clear the sidewalk, it's just not going to happen. And she'd totally like to be able to support us, as would others. My nephew has got twin babies, a three-year-old, a 12-year-old, and to try to get those babies in carriers in and out, it's just not happening. It's, it's a major, major effort, so. And they would like to support us. We're going to provide the jobs. I'm asking you to help me provide the accessibility to these people through providing us a drive-through, which is really more of a courtesy window. It will be, I was doing some research today as to how and, and where to put it and do we jet it out a little bit? How do we serve to make it sure that people in wheelchairs can reach it accordingly? I mean, even you go to the bank, the banks have a drawer that comes out. It's a perfect size, but most of the windows aren't that low. So I have some engineering to do, so to speak, with that. I'd like to invite everybody on the council, anybody in the community, come visit us because this is really my dream, is to help and give back to the community because I can, because there are kids like my son that aren't going to make it. So this is what we're doing.
Questions for Liza? Anyone? Ruth?
When are you hoping to be open?
Yes.
Well, I was hoping to be open in July, but then there was the application of sack and whack and all those things kind of put on hold. So probably in the fall, September, October, maybe, but I will make sure that the news gets out.
Councilmember Landor.
Liza. Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of this completely.
I'm sorry?
I'm in favor of this completely. I've had a longstanding relationship with the disabled, whatever, community, the, the pride, the joy that these folks feel being, they want to contribute, they don't want to just sit around and, oh, gosh, poor little, whatever. I mean, it's, before I realized that I, a friend when I was a kid and he worked in a facility like this, his dad owned four disabled folks. And I said, boy, isn't it pressing? And he said, they're happier than you are. They're joyful people. And I think what a nifty opportunity to show what kind of a community we are, to be able to support something like this, so. Good for you.
Councilmember Goodwin.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this sort of an opportunity to our community. It's very nice.
You're welcome.
Well, seems like we have support, we should vote on it, shouldn't we? So.
Yes.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to pass the ordinance amending chapter 155?
Second.
Motion from council member Bergman, second from council member Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Liza, thank you. This will be fun. There's a similar but different concept in the southeast part of the United States, which I've had the absolute pleasure of spending some time at and not just the coffee, right? But it's the interaction with people you just wouldn't normally have an opportunity to interact with when you go, you know, sit in a bank for a job all day kind of thing. And so, thank you.
I'd like to just go first.
Yeah.
And I think that it's a cover ten coffee shops around the country. What are the owners in Sarasota, Florida?
I just want you to step forward so that, so that both people at home watching can hear you, so.
Um, there's a coffee shop down in Sarasota, Florida that we've gotten a chance to talk to the owner. His name is Beaver Shriver of the Kennedy Shriver's. And he has a one like this and he was very gracious about giving us advice, giving us forms and applications and how to do whatever. So he was really good. At the end of the conversation, he said, I have 300 people, applicants, waiting for jobs.
Wow.
So you can just imagine what we might have. I mean, Sarasota's bigger, but still, we're going to have a lot. So anyway, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to staff and council communications. Tom, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, just one tonight. Without having a second meeting in June, that means our next meeting will not be until July 13th. So I just want to put out to the public the fact that Night to Unite is coming up and we're currently accepting applications for those block parties that want to take place in the community. It's a great way for neighborhoods to come together and bond and we've always had great success in our community with Night to Unite. We'll have over 100 parties, I'm sure. So the application material is online at the city's website if people would like to do that. The application deadline is July 25th, so we still have some time for that. We just wanted to put that out there as a public notice and hopefully we'll have good turnout this year as well.
And Night to Unite is August, do you recall?
I do. Night to Unite is August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st.
Got it. Perfect, thank you. Council, any items? All right. With that, next item is to approve the calendar of upcoming events. Our next informal city council meeting is Thursday, July 13th at 5:30. And our next regular council meeting is Thursday, July 13th at 7:00. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Grendel, a second from council member Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed that carries and just a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday, June 19th, observance of the Juneteenth Day, and on Tuesday, July 4th, an observance of Independence Day. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion from council member Bergman, second from council member Grendel. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.